Okay, good morning everyone. It is May the 28th. Our MPC meeting is nine o'clock in the morning. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions, deletions to the agenda?
We need to add a discussion item. Barb would like to come and talk to you.
Okay, a discussion item. Barb wants to talk. Alrighty, uh, somebody want to move the agenda as amended? Yes?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Very good. We have a motion. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Uh, we pre-circulated the minutes of the last meeting, which was March the 25th. That's why this one seems so long ago. Uh, are there any concerns with the minutes? Deletions, or no, not deletions, omissions? Counselor King, or, sorry, yeah, sorry.
I make the motion to accept the minutes of the March 24th minutes of the planning commission meeting.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Uh, we do not have any business arising from those minutes. We will start with our new business. Number one on our agenda is 3827-20-D. And anytime you're ready, Brandy.
All right, good morning. Chris Evans is on go-to meeting. Uh, so he's just had the ability that if he wants to speak, he will. He doesn't necessarily want to address MPC, he just wants the chance if there's questions. So, this is for a second residence. To consider a stick-built home with an attached garage as a second residence on northwest 283224 west of the fourth. Land use bylaw 1773, section 86-6 allows for additional permanent housing on parcels greater than or equal to 20 acres. There are currently two homes on the parcel. The applicant intends to remove one of the older current dwellings and construct a new stick-built home in the same location. The mobile home that is currently on the property will be staying, as this is where the applicant's parents currently reside. There is a storage building, which was previously a third dwelling, that will be removed at the same time as the other home. Years ago, the older home was converted into a storage structure to accommodate the placement of the mobile home. The proposed residence is to be placed east of the existing home in the same location as the home that's being removed. Setbacks from property lines are required as per the set, property lines are required as per the site plan. No new rural address sign will be required for the new residence. The parcel is accessed via Range Road 244. The parcel is adjacent to a water line, Sunny Slope Water Service Area, which was Phase Four. There is an active riser in place, and the riser is currently connected to the existing home that is to be removed and will be connected to the new home. The surrounding properties are zoned agriculture. The application was referred to internal and external agencies and adjacent properties, or property owners, and no comments have been received to date.
Thanks, Brandy. Any questions from council or commission members? Okay, I guess keep on going.
All right, I'll go through the pictures here. So the property is just northwest of Three Hills. Uh, the star indicates the home that will be removed and where the home will be reconstructed. And just looking at the whole quarter section there on the left. This is pictures of the current home to be removed, and again, this is exactly where the new home is going to be constructed. And this is just looking down the laneway. It shows the mobile home, and then the other home is at the back. And that is it for photos today.
Okay, thank you. You want to go on with planning options and recommendations?
Sure. The municipal planning, 4.1, the municipal planning commission approved development permit application 3827-20-D for a second residence on northwest 283224 west of the fourth with conditions. Or 4.2 is postponed the application pending further information. It is our recommendation that development permit application 382720D as per section 4.1 with the following conditions be approved. Number one, the development must conform to the site plan that was submitted with the application, signed and dated May 28th, 2020, as attached to this approval. Number two, all relevant safety code permits pertaining to the building, private sewage disposal system, gas, electrical, plumbing, must be applied for prior to any work being performed on the site. The location of the proposed development must meet the minimum distance requirements from the existing sewage system as set out for the, as set out in the Alberta Private Sewage Disposal System Regulations and Safety Codes Act. The developer is responsible for making suitable arrangements with utility companies for provisions of services and/or necessary easements and ensuring all development is outside of active, active utility right-of-ways. The design, sitting, external finish, and architectural appearance of the home shall be to the satisfaction of the development authority and must have a permanent foundation capable of supporting the maximum anticipated load of the home during all seasons without settlement or other movement. Number six, Neheil County will not be responsible for dust control as per county policy. If it becomes an issue, the responsibility to pay for dust control would fall to the titled landowner. Number seven, all future additions and developments, including but not limited to decks and porches, will require development permits and relevant safety code permits. Number eight, approval by the approving authority does not exclude the need and/or requirements of the applicant to obtain any and all other permits as may be necessary under this or other legislation, bylaws, or regulations. Number nine, the permit is valid for a period of one year from the date of issue or date of approved decision of the subdivision and development appeal board. If at the expiry of this period- subdivision and development appeal board. If at the expiry of this period, the development or construction has not been commenced or carried out with reasonable diligence, this permit shall be invalid. And number 10, failure to comply with the conditions of this permit will render it null and void.
Okay, thank you very much. I think at this point in time, Mr. Evans, thank you very much for joining us on video conferencing. Is there anything that you would like to add? You don't have to by any means. I just give you the opportunity if you do. I'm assuming, nope. You'd stated that he's just going to be here in case there was questions, so.
Yeah, he was only going to log on if you guys had questions and make sure that he didn't.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Are there any questions from council or commission members? If not, what is the, Commissioner Member King?
So I'd make the motion that municipal planning commission approve the development permit application 3827-20-D for a second residence on the northwest 283224 west of four with the conditions as listed.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion before us to accept what the conditions as presented. Any discussion to that motion? Seans Madden call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm not sure if you can even hear me, Mr. Evans, but if you do have any questions, just follow up with our planning staff, and they will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have or the next, next part of the process. Alrighty, we will now move on to agenda item 2, 3828-20-H. And I take it it's you again, Brandy?
Again, the applicant is on the go-to meeting. That's Sheila McDonald up there.
Yep.
So again, she's same thing. In case you have questions, she's logged on to answer them. She doesn't necessarily want to talk.
Okay.
All right. This is for a home occupation major, equine-assisted learning outdoor arena and a sign for their business. This is on the southwest 3, 3326 west of the fourth, Plan 921110, block one, lot one. The applicants will be building an outdoor arena at the back of their property to facilitate equine-assisted learning. There will be no structures associated with the riding arena, only a fenced arena. The applicants will be the only employees at the time. There is no plans to hire any off-site employees. As per land use bylaw 1773, section 56-4, no more than three off-site employees shall be permitted to be engaged in a home occupation major. The applicant is aware of that exceeding three off-site employees may subsequently trigger a redesignation. Equine assisted learning classes will be private and must be booked ahead of time. Hours of operation will depend on the client's schedule. They will accept bookings from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week, from spring to fall. As this is an outdoor arena, the business will be closed during the winter months. A typical EAL session runs for an hour and a half from start to finish. Clients are not permitted to bring their own horses for the EAL training. Clients will be required to use the applicant's three EAL-trained horses. The applicants do have sufficient land for three horses on their parcel, as per section 40 of the land use bylaw 1773. The hamlet of Torrington is directly to the east of the parcel, and the remainder of the properties surrounding the parcel are zoned agriculture and predominantly farmland. The parcel is bound by Highway 27 to the south and Range Road 263 to the west. Access is from the highway, and Alberta Transportation has been informed of this home occupation application in our referral process. There are no vehicles associated with the business other than the applicant's own. The applicant has indicated that they would like to install signage for their business. The applicant is allowed to have two signs of 16 square feet and smaller without a development permit on the parcel. Signs larger than 16 square feet or more than two signs of 16 square feet would require the written, sorry, smaller would require a permit. Any signs being placed on adjacent landowners' land would require the written approval, and the aforementioned conditions would be applicable. Any signs along a highway would require the approval of Alberta Transportation, in addition to any relevant county permits. The applicants have indicated they would like to install a four-by-six foot, which is about the size of a piece of plywood for the sign for their business. Section 56 of the land use bylaw 1773 addresses home occupations. Planning is the opinion that this proposal will not negatively impact the neighborhood, and it is in compliance with the section of the bylaw. The application was referred to internal and external agencies and adjacent property owners. Alberta Transportation has no concerns with the proposal as indicated. TC Energy had a couple of questions to clarify if any activities would be taking place within their right-of-way of the pipeline. And TC Energy's pipeline intersects at the back of the property, and there are no concerns with this location, with this arena. Other than that, there is no other concerns noted.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission members have any questions for the planner? Yep, looks like you did a wonderful job, Brandy. Go on with pictures, I guess, if you have some.
So, like indicated, it's just outside of Torrington. Where the red star is, is where the location of the riding arena, outdoor riding arena will be. Initially, they had proposed to put it more to the east, but due to the spring runoff, they've had to move the location more to the west to avoid that in the future. This is just showing TC Energy's right-of-way, and it's not within the purple at all. It's at the back of the property line there, so.
So the yellow line indicates what?
That's the setback. So that's where the pipeline is, and then the purple shows the workway.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway.
So nothing's allowed in the purple area, but the white, yellow line indicates that is, you need some sort of communication with TCL.
That's correct.
Would that not be their four right-of-way, then? The track scan of the right-of-way between the two yellow lines?
Yeah, it's within their working area. Yeah, but they, they want to be notified of that area. But the purple area is where things get a little more interesting. And then this is just a...
Commission Member Christie.
My question would be, the right-of-way, they seem to be interested on the traffic and stuff that was over the right-of-way, so this must be a major export line, not a production line? Or is it, the regulation's the same for both?
I'm not sure what the line is, and I'm not, they, so it was a planning, nobody from TC Energy actually talked to me. It was just their planners that they contract to had questions. So.
Okay. I found it interesting that they were worried about the traffic on that pipeline, because I have a lot of pipelines on my property, and I'm thinking, oh, we're negotiating rents, and now you want me to stay off your pipeline right-of-way, too?
Yeah. They, it was more, there was the planners that TC Energy has contracted to that was reviewing the files, so I'm not sure if that was maybe just more their concerns more than TC Energy's.
It definitely tweaked my interest on what rights are on a pipeline.
Yeah. This is the area where the outdoor riding arena will be constructed. And then there's a picture of the three horses that are the EAL horses that they use for their business. And then this is just showing the views from the highway, or the approach to the highway. And that's it for pictures.
Commission Member Keever. So back on the pitch of the red line, that's the acreage they own?
That's their property.
Which is how many acres?
It is the, 10.92 acres.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Ms.?
Is there a limitation to how many horses they can have? 10 acres, you're supposed to allow?
So that falls under section 40 of the livestock, and they are well under that for three horses for 10 acres. Yeah, we do have that in there. It's under section 40. I'm not, excuse me.
Okay. Well, if there's no more questions, we can go on to options and recommendations. Ms. A. Morgan.
I don't, I don't know if Sheila has any.
Do you, I'll, I'll check.
Okay.
Ms. McDonald, do you have anything to add? If you can hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm, no, we don't have any comments or questions at this time, unless you do.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us remotely, anyway. And it doesn't sound like we have any questions for you. Our planner has been able to answer most of the questions, so now we're going to go on to, but it is your opportunity to speak if you so wish. But you've already stated you don't, so we will now move on to the planning options and the recommendations. Ms. A. Morgan, go ahead.
All right. The planning options are 4.1, that the municipal planning commission approve the application for a home occupation major for their equine-assisted learning business on a portion of the southwest 3, 3326 west of the fourth, Plan 9211110, block one, lot one, with the conditions as listed in the recommendation. Or 4.2, postpone the application pending further information. It is our recommendation that the municipal planning commission approve the application for a home occupation major, 3828-20-8H, as per section 4.1, subject to the conditions as listed. This permit is being issued for a home occupation major, which is defined in part of the land use bylaw 1773, as an occupation, trade, profession, or craft carried out, carried on by a resident of a dwelling that is secondary to the residential use of the dwelling, that may include the use of accessory buildings. It does not include a bed and breakfast establishment. Number two, the home occupation shall be confined to the resident and/or farmyard site and to be subordinate to the principal use of the site for agricultural, residential purposes. The application and site plan submitted, signed and dated May 28, 2020, must be adhered to. Number three, the home occupation permit shall not include any use or operation which cause or create a nuisance by way of dust, noise, smell, smoke, or traffic generation. Number four, outdoor storage of material goods, equipment is permitted in accordance with section 5610 of the land use bylaw 1773. Additional screening may be required at the discretion of the planning and development authority, as per section 569 of the land use bylaw 1773. The applicant must apply and attain any approval from Alberta Transportation for roadside development permit for the proposed development and signage. The applicant must provide the, and, sorry. Number six, the applicants must provide the design and dimensions of the signage for the approval of the development authority prior to installation of any and all signage. The signage must meet Alberta Transportation and Neheal County standards and regulations. Number seven, any intensification of use for a home occupation shall require a new development permit. Should the development authority consider any application for intensification at potentially generating a nuisance, the business may be required to relocate to more suitable non-agricultural lands or apply for a redesignation of the lands to a district suitable for the use. Number eight, all relevant safety codes permits pertaining to building, private sewage disposal, gas, electrical, and plumbing must be applied for prior to any work being performed on the site. Number nine, the developer is responsible for making suitable arrangements with utility companies for the provision of services and/or necessary easements and ensuring all development is outside of active utility right-of-ways. Number 10, all future additions and developments will require development permits and relevant safety code permits. Number 11, approval by the approving authority does not exclude the need and/or requirements of the applicant to obtain any and all other permits as may be necessary under this or any other legislation, bylaws, or regulations. Number 12, this permit shall be revocable any time with the development permit if, in its opinion, there has, the use is or has become detrimental to the amenities of the neighborhood. Number 13, the applicant and owner must conform with the application and information submitted with it. Failure to comply with the conditions of this permit will render it null and void.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any, what's the commission's wishes, I guess, is where we're going to next? Questions, comments, concerns, or a motion? Yes, Commission Member Christie?
I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve the application for the home occupation major, 3828-20-H, as per section 4.1, subject to the conditions as listed.
Thank you, Commission Member Christie. We have a motion before us. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Again, Ms. McDonald, if you need any clarification or have any questions, by all means, contact the planning staff. They are more than willing and more than happy to help you with your next steps. Thank you for joining us today. Okay, we will now move on to agenda item number three, 3230-20-D. Welcome, Deanna.
Good morning. Good morning. This is an application that we have before us from Carova Feeders on the southwest of 28, 29, 25 for a second dwelling. And the reason for the second dwelling will be a residence for their hired help on the existing feedlot. Second dwellings are discretionary use on parcels equal to or greater than 20 acres, and thus requiring your approval. At the time of application, the agent did not know what type of dwelling they would be purchasing. However, on an update on April 30th, they had forwarded options to me. They are considering a new manufactured home from Nelson Homes. As per the site plan, the location of the residence will be where a mobile home existed years ago, between the two laneways accessing the yard site. Setbacks from property lines are required as per the site plan. A rural address sign will not be required for the new residence, as one still exists for the mobile home which was removed when the current landowners purchased the land. The parcel is accessed via Range Road 25-4. The parcel is adjacent to the South Coast Phase Three water line. The applicants wish to tie into the existing water system. They have also advised they will tie into the existing sewer system, which previously serviced the mobile home. The application from 2005 indicated that it was a tank with a field system. This parcel, the parcel of land is not within an environmentally significant area or a significant historical site. The surrounding properties are zoned agriculture. The application was referred to internal and external agencies. The only comments that we received, Alberta Health Service just wanted to make sure that all the locations of the existing private sewage systems and wells were located to ensure they met current regulations, and there were no other objections from anyone else.
Thank you, Deanna. Does the commission have any questions for Deanna? Nope, looks like you're, you're doing good. So can we move on to pictures if you have some?
I'm pretty sure most of you know the location. It's just northeast of Acme. This is the actual quarter section that it will be located on. I should have, oh, oh, my mouse works. So it'll be right between, this will be the location of the mobile home. And this is where they have, they, this will be the exact location of where previously the mobile home was. So they just have started a little bit of dirt work. And that's it.
Okay, very good. If you can go on with your planning comments or options and recommendations.
Okay. Your options today are either to approve it or postpone it. Administration is recommending approval for a second residence on the southwest of 28, 29, 25, as, with the following conditions. The permit is being issued pursuant to section 86 of land use bylaw 1773. Development must conform to the site plan that was submitted with the application, signed and dated May 28, 2020. Two, the applicant shall provide the Neheal County Planning Department with the manufacturer, model, year, CSA number, and an image of the housing manufactured type two. All relevant safety code permits pertaining to building, private sewage disposal, gas, electrical, and plumbing must be applied to prior to any work being done on site. Four, the location of the proposed development must meet the minimum distance requirements for the existing sewage system, as per the Alberta Private Sewerage Regulations. Five, the developer is responsible for making suitable arrangements with utility companies for provision of services and/or necessary easements. Six, the design, sitting, external finish, and architectural appearance of the housing shall be to the satisfaction of the development authority and must be CSA-approved. The home must have a permanent foundation capable of supporting the maximum anticipated load of the home during all seasons without settlement or other movement in accordance with the Alberta Building Code. Seven, the undercarriage of the housing shall be completely screened from view by skirting within 60 days of placement of the unit. Eight, all accessory structures such as steps, patios, porches, additions, skirting, and storage facilities shall be factory prefabricated or of a quality equivalent thereto, so that the design and construction will be complement the housing manufactured, too. And all units shall be provided with steps and landing stall entrances within 30 days of their placement. All future addition and developments, but not limited to decks and porches, will require development permits and relevant safety code permits. Ten, approval by the approving authority does not exclude the need and/or requirements of the applicant to obtain any and all other permits that may be necessary. Eleven, this permit is valid for a period of one year from the date of issue or the date of approved decision of the SDAB. And 12, failure to comply with the conditions of this permit will render it null and void.
Thank you, Ms. Keever. Are there any questions from the commission members? Or what are your wishes? Commission Member Vickery? Commission Member Vickery?
Mr. Chair, I would also move file number three-eight-three-zero-dash-two-zero-D, Carova Feeders, southwest twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to accept with the conditions as presented. If there's no questions, I will, well, I guess I'll call the question if there's no questions. All those in favor? Okay, that is carried unanimously. Before we move on to the next item, I see we have someone that could possibly be on video, or?
That's Dennis Tej.
Oh.
None of my applicants, they really didn't want to be. I do have one later on. I have his phone number if we have questions, just to call him.
So, okay, so Dennis is listening, but I'm not recording his votes because I can't see him.
That's right.
Good.
He's just on the phone.
Just on the phone. All right, good. Good to know because I wasn't sure. All right, so we will move on to the next application, KNE-two-zero-zero-one-three-eight.
All right. So this is an application just north of the one that we just previously talked about. This is for Jim and Janice Northcott on the southeast of thirty-two, twenty-nine, twenty-five. They wish to consider a five-acre subdivision out of an existing farm site, out of an existing thirty-five acres. This would be the fifth parcel and final subdivision allowed out of this quarter section as per land use by law seventeen-seventy-three. Four titles exist between the northeast and the southeast quarter. This quarter has multiple fragments due to the abandoned railway. Previous subdivisions have used the rail line as the border. Two of the previously subdivided parcels have been consolidated into parcels in the northeast quarter. Municipal reserves will be required. The quarter is adjacent to the Selkirk Water Line Phase Three. A riser is in place for the existing residence where the line also ends. A riser will be required for the new subdivision and would be considered adjacent as the subdivision is within one hundred meters of the curb stop. This will depend, excuse me, of the results of water modeling indicating sufficient water is available. The existing private sewage system is a field system. This will have to be verified by a septic inspection or a surveyor. Surrounding lands are primarily the crop land. However, a fairly substantial feedlot exists southeast of the proposed subdivision, as well as the abandoned railway lies to the west. The subdivision proposal has a CLI rating of five, which further supports section eighty-six whereby agricultural land with a classification of one to three shall be preserved for agriculture purposes. This parcel is adjacent and accessed by Range Road twenty-five-four. Road widening exists on a small portion of this quarter north of the abandoned railway. I did talk to Brad with transportation and he did not feel that a right-of-way would, or road widening would be required. Because when we look on web map, it looks like it is, was taken on the west. There is an approach to the existing yard site and one to the proposed subdivision. However, these will have to be inspected. All required services must be located on the parcel they service. There can be no shared services between parcels. The proposed subdivision is adjacent to the Neheal Creek environmentally significant area and is not within a historically significant area. This application was referred out to internal and external agencies. Atco Gas has requested the landowners notify Atco Gas as there is no existing utility right-of-way on the property or it may not be sufficient for subdivision servicing. So they'll just have to make arrangements. Alberta Health Services recommends the locations of the existing private sewage systems and wells be located to ensure they meet current regulations and there were no other concerns or objections raised.
Commission members, have any questions? Commission Member King?
I note that you noted the feedlot, but you didn't mention anything of the compost site, which is just within a half mile of that location as well.
I should have said that, too.
To me, that would be of greater concern to the potential future development on this subdivision than the feedlot.
It's going to be his son who is going to be purchasing the property. So I guess if they don't, and I mean, they're the ones that are living there, so.
Okay, just was curious because I heard about the feedlot, but not the compost site.
It's not for sale. It'll be a son who builds there.
Okay. Still have to live there.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Keever? If not, we can go on to pictures.
All right, so there's the existing subdivision. And here is what they propose. So you can see how, so this here is the, kind of like just an estimate that we did, the hundred meters from where the water line stops. So as long as they build within that hundred meters, they would be considered adjacent. And they do definitely want and need the water, so.
I guess I just have a quick question for you, Ms. Keever.
Yeah.
I know the application says to state, or states, plus or minus five-acre subdivision. Couple of places in the application that says three-point-nine-five. This picture shows four-point-nine-five. I guess it doesn't really matter.
Well, initially, they had applied, like when they even came in, we discussed four. But then when they actually went out to meet that hundred meters, we kind of made it a little bit bigger so that they could.
Okay.
And they kind of also didn't want it too long and skinny, just to help setbacks for development.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that it was, obviously, it'll be under five acres, but
Yeah.
wasn't sure if it was three-point-nine-five or four-point-nine-five, but that's fine. Okay.
This is the, just the yard to the existing residence. And this is the, just where the sub, it's a, just a flat, flat area. This is the, would be their north boundary. This is their west.
Okay.
And then this is just looking more towards the yard site, the existing yard site. But this would still, this is the approach. It would still have to be inspected, but this would be the approach to the subdivision. Give or take, we think this will have to be the beginning of the subdivision to meet the hundred meters.
All right. Well, if there's no questions, we can go on to options and recommendations. Okay, go ahead.
Administration is, I guess your options are either approving it or postponing it. And we are recommending that application KNE-two-hundred-one-three-eight to subdivide a five-acre parcel from the thirty-five-point-three-one acres on the southeast of thirty-two, twenty-nine, twenty-five west of the fourth. Plan nine-two-one-one-four-seven-two, block one, be approved with the following conditions. One, the subdivision must be registered in accordance with the tentative plan submitted for a five-plus-or-minus-acre parcel and by way suitable to Alberta land titles in accordance with the Land Titles Act. All outstanding taxes on the land involved, current and arrears if any, are to be paid in full to the municipality before the subdivision may be endorsed. As per section six-six-one, six-six-six, and six-six-seven of the MGA, the applicant must provide ten percent municipal reserves and/or school reserves to be taken as cash in lieu of dedication of land. Based on CLI average, CLI level, the average per acre value amounts to one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, with ten percent for point-five acres being nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents. The final amount owing will be calculated upon receipt of the final survey plan using this value. Access is to be provided to the approved subdividing parcel and remnant parcel. Confirmation of compliance is required for all existing and proposed accesses, which must be located and constructed in accordance with the Neheal County Approach Guidelines. The surveyor must provide a written note or a plan showing the setbacks of the existing septic system contained on the portion of the southeast of thirty-two, twenty-nine, twenty-five. Plan nine-two-one, block one, to all property lines. The minimum setback requirements to the new property lines must be met, depending on the type of septic system in place. As per Neheal County policy, the proposed subdivision is considered to be adjacent to a county water line. The landowner or applicant must apply and pay a fee for a water modeling study to determine the capacity and ability of the water line to service the subdivision. If the results of the water modeling indicate that the subdivision can be serviced by the water line, the landowner shall be required to take a riser at the fee set out in the master rates by law. The county will not be responsible for dust control as per county policy. Current registrations of utility easements, right-of-ways, and or crossing are required by service providers. All services, water, sewer, power are to be provided by the landowner at their expense and they must conform to the utility provider conditions. Each developed parcel must be serviced by its own water source and private sewage treatment system. This applies to all other utilities, including but not limited to electricity and gas. All future site development will require the appropriate development and safety code permit approvals. And twelve, approval by the approving authority does not exclude the need and/or requirements of the applicants to obtain any and all permits that may be necessary under this or any other legislation.
Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of the commission? Council or Commission Member Penner?
I would move that MPC approve KNE-two-hundred-one-three-eight as submitted with the conditions listed.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion before us to accept with the conditions as presented. Any discussion to that motion? Things done, call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to number five, KNE-two-zero-zero-one-three-nine, and it is Deanna.
All right, this is an application from Vantage Point Resources on the southwest of twelve, thirty-four, twenty-six for a thirty-nine-plus-or-minus-acre subdivision of the, what is formerly known as the Wimbourn Gas Plant, from the surrounding farmland. A class-two and class-three abandoned reclaimed landfill sites are also located just north of this operating site, which are also included in this proposal. The plant was built in nineteen-sixty-four slash sixty-five by Mobile Oil and Partners. It was owned and operated by part of this group until nineteen-ninety-six. Since that time, it has been owned and operated by several different companies. In two thousand and twelve, the sulfur stack, the sulfur plant and stack was decommissioned while owned by Penn West Energy. The stack was removed in February of two thousand and nineteen. The proposal includes all the equipment and buildings associated with the gas plant. The reclaimed area north of the site is included. Class-two is considered non-hazardous waste landfill and a class-three is an inert waste landfill. The landowner provided the following information. The class-two and class-three landfill sites were located at LSD-five, twelve, thirty-four, twenty-six. AERWM approval number WM-zero-five-four. They were both abandoned and reclaimed in two thousand and one. Pursuant to a facility liability declaration form and pursuant to directive zero-zero-one, there are zero dollars associated with the complete asset retirement obligations for the suspension, abandonment, remediation, and reclamation of the sites. Originally, Ulster Petroleum Limited were the ones who took out the, the application for these landfill sites. And that was in ninety-nine, so they were only in operation for like two years and then they started the reclamation process. The landowner advised typically no one wants to purchase these areas, so that is why it is remaining with the proposal. Similar to a proposal for an existing farmstead separation, the total area is encompassing only the gas plant and reclamation site. No redesignation is proposed in either parcel, proposed subdivision, or remnant. However, there is a potential for blanket redesignation on the gas plant to industrial with proposed land use by law eighteen-zero-eight. This would also satisfy the MDP-seventeen-thirty-five policy-ten, requiring all non-agricultural uses subdivided to be redesignated to the appropriate land use district. The remnant is mainly cropland, however quite hummocky. Municipal reserves will not be required as this is the first parcel out. The proposal and surrounding lands are zoned agriculture. The proposed subdivision does not include any land considered environmentally significant, sensitive. However, a small portion, the southeast corner of the remnant, is considered part of the Three Hills Creek ESA. The proposed subdivision is not within a historically significant area. The quarter section also lies entirely within a soil classification rating of three. Access to the subdivision is granted via Range Road twenty-six-one. Suitable access to the remnant will need to be approved by the transportation department as per policy. The parcel is not adjacent to a water line, nor does it have a well on site. Water is trucked in and there is a septic tank on site. This application was referred out to internal and external agencies, as well as adjacent landowners. Atco Electric responded advising they will be approaching the affected landowners for the purpose of acquiring power line right-of-ways. Atco Pipelines had no concerns, but the applicant will be sent a copy of the letter required regarding any future development, and no other objections were raised.
Thank you, Ms. Keever. Are there any questions from the commission for our planner?
What is that word, humpbacky? What is that?
Oh, I guess it's a made-up word. Just a little bit hilly, low spots, public.
I didn't want to ask, but good thing you did.
Someone has to step in.
That's why you're here.
I think when I, if you go, when we go over the aerial, you might be able to see.
Okay, let's do that then. Let's go to pictures.
You've just got, it's, it is quite up and downy. I guess you don't see it, it's more, in a way, the adjacent parcels. So yeah, this is the existing quarter section, the way we see it today. This is the proposed subdivision. And this would be your reclamation areas. And you can kind of see here, this square. This is kind of where one of the sites actually was.
All right.
This is the subdivision that, or the proposed plan that they have submitted. You can see there's quite a few pipelines.
Yeah, no kidding. Commission Member Christie?
My question is, it's got multiple accesses to the road, the quarter to the north. But does it have access to the road, or what is access there?
Well, we wouldn't be concerned with the quarter to the north. They are going to have to have one to the remnant here, so. I mean, I don't know for sure, like whether this would be, it's kind of up to vantage, which one, and then, and our transportation department, as to what they pick for the.
Because it looks to me like the, the approach north of the well site, or the site, is still in the subdivision. And I know I sprayed it about five or six years ago. To cross from that south approach just isn't possible. My sprayer was two-wheel drive and I didn't cross the draw with a sprayer. So a truck's not, a truck's not going to get around to the top of that quarter.
It is going to be up to vantage, like we, a requirement is access to the remnant.
Okay.
Isn't there an access off of the?
Highway.
Bins on the north end? I think there's one right in the north.
I think there is an access. So what's the requirement, I guess, from that road that's? That was my question was.
Yeah, there is an approach off five-eight-seven, there's nothing gas at all. Right up in the northeast.
So it's a shared right-of-way, no matter which?
Yeah, you and I sat there for three seconds.
But I know when I sprayed, I sat, I sat up by those bins and came in on that north approach. So I'm just curious, who owns that at the end of the day?
It'll be up to vantage how they.
Share it or whatever they do.
That's right, and how they.
It'll be in one of the conditions for approval, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
It's the problem with hummocky land.
It's, it's rough.
There's tons of water.
It's rough and there's.
These are pictures, these are just assessment pictures that I grabbed, so. These aren't ones that are there today, but they were there in two thousand and sixteen, so I'm assuming most of that equipment is still there. This picture is one that I took. The one on the right is again my picture. The one on the left was one that I took from the assessment. So this, I don't like, so this is the, what I assume would maybe be the south approach to the remnant, but I mean, again, that's not my decision, it's just I know it's there. And then that's from the approach looking towards the plant. And I do believe this is probably the area that you guys are all talking about. So, and you can see how, with this one, this is your area, like your reclamation area, which is, it's definitely south of these pizometers. So, and there, there was a map showing their area definitely south of those, so. It is definitely being all contained in the subdivision. There's just more of the area. And this is, I'm sitting at the, the, one of the main approaches to the plant.
Looking north.
Looking north. Looking north.
All righty, if there's no more questions, we will, we will go on to options and recommendations.
All right, your options today are either approve it or postpone it. Administration is recommending approval to subdivide thirty-nine-plus-or-minus acres from the southwest of twelve, thirty-four, twenty-six with the following conditions. One, the subdivision must be registered in accordance with the tentative plan submitted and by a way suitable to Alberta land titles in accordance with the Land Titles Act. Two, compliance with the Neale Hill County land use by law setback requirements as demonstrated by an Alberta land surveyor. All outstanding taxes on the land involved, current and arrears if any, are to be paid in full to the municipality before the subdivision may be endorsed. I would like to take out condition four because a rural address already exists. So even on my site photos, you can see, there it is. Five, confirmation of compliance for all existing accesses from the county road, from the Range Road twenty-six dash one, is required, and they must be located and constructed in accordance with the Neale Hill County Approach Construction Guidelines. Any shared approaches will be, will require the approval of all parties. Six, the county will not responsible for dust control as per county policy. Seven, concurrent registrations of utility easements, right-of-ways, and or crossing agreements as required by service providers. Eight, all services, water, sewer, power, et cetera, are to be provided by the landowner at their expense and must conform to the utility provider conditions. Nine, all future site development will require the appropriate Development and Safety Code permits and approvals. And ten, approval by the approving authority does not exclude the need and or requirements of the applicants to obtain any and all permits as may be necessary under this or any other legislation.
Okay, thank you, Deanna. What's the, okay, Commission Member Vickery.
Just a question, if something was found on this site to be contaminated, is there any type of follow-up this, here to make sure?
Well, today, we're just looking at drawing new property lines.
I know, but I'm just saying, this here is the year since nineteen sixty, across.
Right.
Been there for one time. You just don't know sometimes on a site that's had anything and everything come into it. This is where the devil's at, you know. Just to say that somebody walks away from something, you see, what else is there to use to help it?
I don't think we would have any.
Oh, karaoke?
I don't think we do want to sit here.
So typically, the AR, AER, Alberta Energy Regulator, is who is the one that oversees all of the reclamation. I know that anything that was approved years and years ago, the reclamation requirements are a little bit different than anything modern. Like they actually have to do a lot more site work now than they would have had to do years ago, but they would dictate that. These properties do change hands all the time, and we don't know about it. We've actually inherited a couple. But it's our choice, if it would go into foreclosure, it would be our choice whether we would take it or it just stays on the tax roll. So we're not obligated. If there's anything between them and the adjacent landowner, or like if they choose to sell the farmland, which is what I am assuming they're going to do, then that has to be worked out between them. We're not involved because we don't oversee that reclamation requirement. And it would be, Alberta Environment as well would likely be involved in some of that stuff that has to happen. So, yeah, we're just at this point creating a title. Whoever purchases the adjacent land needs to deal with the current owner.
I guess the reason why I ask is when you take an old service station site and a whole panel, it's all a little bit more, right? Look at the involvement, this was one, two, the tanks on the ground. When you take thirty-nine acres, a different ball.
With sulfur power.
Yeah. No, with, without question, and there's, what was I just going to say? It's gone.
We did, like, AER, they were, we did try to contact them multiple times, and whenever they did kind of come, their mainly concern was if there was a, an application for development, but there wasn't. This is just boundary lines.
Oh, under the legislation, there is obligation on any party that's ever had part of this land, that they may have to come to the table if there was an issue, a reclamation issue. How they enforce it under their legislation, if parties are bankrupt or dissolved or that kind of thing, that's, that's their, up to them with how they can go forward with that, but, yeah, and I mean, Vantage bought this just recently. This was Penn West for a long time and Mobile before then, so they're inheriting all of that as well. But I do know a lot of it has been decommissioned. I think they're still going to be decommissioning some more pieces of this plant, is my understanding. So, but yeah, valid question, but it's not our wheelhouse. Thank goodness.
Commission Member Christie.
Before you run away, is that whole quarter not designated as industrial, or?
No, it's designated as agriculture.
It is agriculture.
And so with the new bylaw and Mr. Jones, they've, they've agreed to designate this new subdivision as industrial and the blanket rezoning with land use eighteen oh eight. Everything else will be left agriculture.
Oh, Council Member Penner.
Is this, is this what the surveyed map's going to look like, or is it going to be more straight lines?
No, I, I think it'll be that way. It was this way.
Yeah, ultimately, all we're doing is determining acreage. We're not doing any development here, so. Okay. Any other questions? If there are none, maybe someone could move. Commission Member King.
I got my microphone to work, so I'll make the motion that we approve KNE two hundred one three nine as submitted for the thirty-nine-acre plus-or-minus subdivision with conditions as listed.
Oh, as amended, because we will pull number, because we will pull number four out. Okay, we've got a motion before us. Are there any questions to that conversation, to that motion? Things done, I'll call the question. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously, and that brings us to the end of our new business. Is there any, anybody wanting to have a recess?
Like two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you feel like you were called to the principal's office?
We will now move on to discussion items, and I have the amended discussion items. Ms. Hazleton wants to speak.
I'm sorry. I just got this, so I just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Great.
For fun, as soon as I find my picture. So we, we have our inter-ministerial development plan with Three Hills, so this is our very first item that's come through the doors, so I just thought I'd bring it up for you. This piece of property that is, it's in that industrial strip that runs to the west, is owned by the honey farm, and so they're looking at redesignating that for a food processing facility and warehouse there. So it's going to go from commercial general to industrial general, so they have submitted this application to us for our comment. But I just thought I'd make you aware that they've got something happening, so, which is.
So they're just expanding into that site and leaving the other site?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what the processing part is, whether that's going to be honey or if it's going to be other products that are related, not sure. I didn't get any more details, but I just thought, as it's our first IDP coming in the door, we would let you guys be aware of that. Yeah. So, yeah, so anyway, it's a good sign. So I don't know if you have comments or questions, but I just thought I'd make you guys aware.
Thank you.
Looks like you're, you're, yeah, that was quick.
It was, yeah.
Any comments or questions, or, while, while we're on the subject? Doesn't look like it. So I guess our next item is next meeting date, June the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty. We're good. Put it in the calendars. And does that bring us to the end of our, yes, that brings us to the end, so I will adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us, Dennis.